Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. This is our first budget workshop meeting. Happy to see everyone here. If you are a member, so what we will do is you have this schedule. We will be going through the, some of the smaller cap items tonight and you have this schedule in front of you. We will go through each item and then at the end of each item, we will take questions, first from our Board of Selectmen and then from, if you're on the Board of Finance or you're on the Board of F and B, if you want to put your questions in the chat box, that's the way we want to do it, right Kate?
Yes. And there was a question about, I don't know if I can add a file into here. There's a question about what budgets we're going to be covering. Tonight, we're doing a lot of the small budgets, so all of general government, the community budgets like planning, harbor master, beautification, we'll be doing the building department and a couple of the human service areas like human services, senior center, youth services and health. I do believe the schedule is posted on the web, I don't know exactly where, but we can make sure that it's out there for tomorrow. But if you're ready, I'm going to share my screen and make sure I get the right one. Okay, so you should be seeing right now a screen that says Board of Selectmen. The proposal details.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's first up on our list. This is your budget. You know, before we go further, I forgot something I like to say to people, say to the boards every year. You know, I think I put together a good budget. Some of the decisions were hard, I mean, they were really hard. There were some that I agonized over and only cut at the, at the last minute when I was trying to get to what I felt was a reasonable increase. But that said, it's, you know, it's now your budget and it's your budget to develop. And I'm not going to be kicking and screaming, stomping my feet if you cut something that I like or add back something that I cut out. It's your decision now. And, you know, my job and Jen's job is to assist you as best we can to give you the information you need to make the decisions. You know, it's my job to defend my decisions to you, but if you want to make a different decision, that's your role and, you know, I'm here to support you in that. So that said, let's get into the Board of Selectmen budget. So this budget covers the operations, some of the operations of this office. What you'll see is the full-time salary. That is the First Selectman and one of our administrative assistants. What I want to point out to you here is that the First Selectman's salary is determined by the Board of Finance and it's set for the term. With any salary account, when we budget, if it's a non-represented employee, it's their current salary. If it's a union employee, it's the grade and step they will be at on July 1st. We also calculate the salaries basically to the day. So, you know, we're paid on a bi-weekly basis, but there's not an even 26 pay periods in any fiscal year. So when the budgets are being developed, Jen tells all the departments, you know, it's 26.1 or it's 26.2 pay periods. So you might see somebody whose salary say it's, you know, $75,000, but the budget is actually for $75,400. And that's, you know, that one day. So there's not a lot that's terribly remarkable in this budget. We are estimating less travel at this time for the First Selectman. Former First Selectman was involved in some organizations that I expect Monica will be involved in at some point in the future, but right now is not. Clerical services, we are no longer using outside people to do the minutes for the Board of Selectmen meetings. I do them, so we've cut that out completely. Our dues and professional licenses. This covers CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. They're the lobbying organization for municipalities in Connecticut. It covers the Council of Small Towns, which is, you know, just what you would expect. It's an organization for smaller towns. And then our dues to WestCog. And these are all dues that we've been informed by the organizations that that's what it'll be for the next fiscal year. Professional services, you see a decrease. We took out, in the current year, there was an amount in there for a study of emergency services. And obviously, we're not repeating that next year, so that's why you see the significant decrease. But I have added in there $4,000 for expenses for the Think Smart Before You Start campaign. Last year, that was funded by the Police False Alarm Fund and by a donation from the Darien Police Association. So I'm including it in expense for the Board of Selectmen next year to continue that campaign. But it's much lower than the original because there's less startup costs. Going further down to the next two lines, we've combined them into one line, so you see that the software licenses and upgrades goes away and it's part of the software maintenance Our office supplies, we're holding steady. And that's the end of, that's the end of the operating expenses for that budget. Sarah?
I'm gonna, I don't know if this is the place, but I would hope it is lobby for a little bit more on the Think Smart Before You Start line item. We kind of ran out of some supplies early on. I'm wondering if we can put at least $5,000 in there. I know you put $4,000. I don't know how everyone else feels. And if that's an issue later on, that's fine, but I'd like to be able to lobby to do that, please. Thank you.
Okay. And, you know, I do, that raises a good point. We will, Jen and I will keep track as we go along of the changes that are being proposed. You don't actually vote until the end. We won't take a vote until February 7th. So, you know, you want to add and take out and add and take out something out, you know, several times, that's okay. We're just going to take notes of the things that you're indicating you would like to add or take out, and then we'll go over that again at the end. Is there anything else on the Board of Selectmen budget? I'm going to move on. I'm going to move on to town administrator budget, which is my budget.
Hey Kate?
Yep.
Are you going to go through revenues at all?
Um, we can, absolutely.
Yeah. So can we go back to Board of Selectmen revenues?
Okay. We give you credit, the Board of Selectmen credit for the, Jen, help me out, what does the MERSA stand for? Okay. I don't know where Jen is.
Hang on one second. I was holding up a finger, but you probably can't see me. And it was just my index finger. MERSA is municipal revenue sharing.
Okay. So that's a state grant. The miscellaneous state grants is just actually what it says. You know, every once in a while, we get some oddities and that's our catch-all. Other charges for services, I don't recall offhand what that is. The other big nut in here, Metro Mobile rent, this is the cell tower that's by the transfer station recycling center. We rent that out to Metro Mobile and they pay rent. It's based on the, the rent that they receive from their sub-tenants. We rent a portion of the land behind the transfer station to BMW. We get an operating transfer in from, this one is from police for special duty. It covers the admin costs associated with paying officers for private duty. And then the ECS grant. This is the state grant educational cost sharing that all municipalities get. And we'll hit the capital in these departments that we're covering now at the, after we've gone through the operating. Okay. So town administrator budget, there are two sections to it. The first section is my share of office expenses here. So the full-time salary is my salary and a portion of our administrative secretary that I share with Human Resources. I go to a national conference every year and those are the expenses related to it. I also attend some Connecticut City Managers Associations meeting and I go to the local Connecticut GFOA meetings. The dues is my dues for ICMA and for the GFOA. I'm a certified public finance officer and I pay a fee to maintain that, that designation or the town pays a fee for me to maintain that designation. I also have recently joined the ADA Coalition of Connecticut. It falls under my responsibilities to make sure that we are up to date on certain ADA Professional services, you'll see a decrease here. This is because we learned that we no longer have to print the annual report. We, we publish it to the web only, so we eliminated that cost. And telecommunications is a cost for a cellphone for me, for work. And publications, that allows me to buy certain manuals, books related to our functions.
You have enough funding to maintain your certification, CP credits, all of that is all built into this?
Right. The, if I go to the national conference, I can get the majority of my credits there. It's interesting, they, they changed the program. We now have a choice. I think Jen and I chose two, two different options. You can, I have to get engagement credits. So some of my engagement credits I get by reviewing budgets for other communities and for participating in certain networks for the GFOA. So it's, you know, it's a valuable program to me.
Got it.
Okay. The next part of my budget is support services, where I carry a lot of costs for things that are more general to the town. So the full-time salary is the town's portion, the general funds portion, I should say, of the receptionist. 25% of her salary is in this budget. The balance is in the parking fund. She is the parking administrator. You'll find the TV79 operators in here and that budget is based, I'm sorry, that budget is based on their request for the number of hours they feel they need. Professional services, this is for our contracts for maintenance of the printers for parking ticket processing and we pay for a meeting service that assists us with doing the minutes, doing the agendas.
Kate, is, is the entire parking ticket processing in your budget, in this, in this budget?
No, it's shared with, it's shared with parking.
So it's 75, 25?
It's based on the number of spaces. I think it's not quite 75, 25. I think it's 78, 22. Printing, you'll see, is down a little bit and that's because we're no longer printing budget books at this level. Advertising, that's related to having to advertise bids in the paper. Mailing and shipping, this is the majority of the mailing cost for the town. It does not include the police, but this is our mailing expenses for everybody. Same thing, copy, equipment lease rental debt is all the copiers in town hall. The police have a separate line for their copiers.
On the little pieces of this that are IT-related, like software maintenance or support or licenses, printer contracts, copier maintenance contracts, kind of all of that stuff that fits in that general family, right, is, all of this obviously has been properly allocated to the department, but there's a holistic view on all of that stuff, both for the town and the Board of Education in terms of making sure we've got the best deal on copier repair agreements and that we haven't overbought licenses and all that stuff. So does Jeff do that and, and make sure that all that's being looked at in an overall sense carefully so that the costs that we see here that are allocated, say here, and we'll see them in other departments, are, are part of that big picture that he's overseeing to make sure that that, those expenditures are coordinated and not excessive?
No. Jeff has never been involved in our copier equipment. The printing, yes, I have, you know, we have discussed, he and I have discussed probably every year, you know, whether the printing maintenance guy that we're using is the best, is the best option for us. The software maintenance, you know, that's an interesting one. We have, you'll see the bulk of our software maintenance costs in the IT budget. And what we have traditionally done is the costs for software that are pretty much townwide go there. But when a department has a specialty software that only they use, or maybe it's two departments that use it, it goes into that department or it's split, like tax and assessment, they share a software, that cost is split between the two of them. It's not in the IT budget. It's a philosophical thing and, you know, always open to discussion on whether that's the right way to handle it, whether we should congregate them all or allocate them all out. I'd hate to think of allocating the Munis cost out to everybody, but, you know, it would add a lot of work, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to introduce change in this sort of first meeting of all this, but just thinking about whether some kind of aggregation of costs, and it doesn't just have to be these costs, but that enables sort of a single point of responsibility to shine a bright light on all of them all together and say, okay, are we managing all this right? Does some of this need to be refreshed? Are we, do we have duplicate expenditures, that kind of thing?
Yeah.
It's likely that there's a lot of that, but it might be worth just having a philosophical discussion about those kinds of expenses that could be aggregated in a way that could be helpful.
Well, you know, one thing that we, sometimes the aggregating is just going to provide you more information. It's not necessarily going to save us, but when you look at the accounts, you see here like software support, it says 82034. We can actually run your reports that would tell you all the software, you know, we can run the reports by that account code so that even though we've got them in various departments, you could see in one report all the costs.
You could pull a vertical.
Yep.
You could pull a vertical that would pull all those costs and let us look at it.
Yes.
All right. Maybe later, but thank you.
Okay. So my software is going up quite a bit and that's a TV79 cost. And I'm sorry to say that I'm blanking on what that one was for. Then the rest of it, food and related supplies, this is, this is coffee. Employee, it's one of the perks we provide to the employees is that the coffee is on the town.
Well, if they're dealing with this all day, they need a lot of coffee, so approved.
Does anybody have any questions on, on my budget? Okay. I'm going to move on then to Human Resources. So on full-time salary, we see the Human Resources Director and the other portion of the admin that she and I share. She also attends conferences on an annual basis to maintain certifications. So going to the National Public Employee Labor Relation Association and state meetings as well. Training services here is, this is for training for employees. We haven't been able to do a lot of it in person the last couple of years for obvious reasons, but we are trying to get back to it. Again, her dues are for her professional associations. Professional services, we do background checks on certain categories of employees, particularly if they're going to be working with children, so lifeguards, camp counselors. Advertising is to advertise job openings. That can go up or down depending on how many openings we have during any given year. So we just do our best estimate. Medical services, we drug test lifeguards. We do have to reimburse certain employees for getting physicals. The public works employees that have CDL licenses, that's the commercial license for the big snowplows. There are some employees that we send for preplacement physicals. And then last year, for the first time, we saw this OSHA hearing conservation program. It's a requirement. We have to have any employee who's exposed to certain kinds of noise, we have to have them get hearing tests every year. So last year was the first time they did that. I should say, when I say last, this year, fiscal '22 is the first time we did that. Publications, obvious. Food and related supplies, this is the employee recognition event. We also have a small amount for condolence fund when people suffer losses, but the bulk of it is the employee service luncheon. And this is a number that goes up and down depending on the year, depending on who's got milestones. So you'll see that move around a bit.
Kate, going back to advertising, based on the, the environment right now, this isn't a lot of money, but do you think that that's sufficient, the 650?
You know, it depends on what we're advertising for. You know, some of the positions, if it's a clerical position, we don't necessarily have to do a lot of advertising. We can post it on the web and get some sufficient number of applicants and good applicants. If it's a professional position, we might have to pay to advertise in a professional You know, like my professional association or Jeremy's, they would have websites that, you know, maybe they charge for us to post the application there. And that's, with those people, that's where you want to go. An ad in the local paper is not going to get you the right candidates for those high-level positions. So it's, you know, this one will vary. You know, like I said, we're, we're putting our best estimate in there, but some years, that's not going to be enough and some years we'll, we'll barely touch it.
And does just one firm do background checks? Do you have all that work consolidated with the?
Yes. I'm going to go to Jen's budget next. Okay, so full-time salary, that covers Jen. It covers the Assistant Finance Director, Payroll Administrator and a Senior Account Clerk, who's our AP Administrator. Travel is mileage reimbursement for in-state meetings. Again, Jen holds the same designation I do as a certified public finance officer. So these are conferences for her to go to conferences. And we also have funds in here to allow a staff member to go to the Munis conference.
What are the training services?
Well, training services, that's, Munis-paced training, I'm, Jen, I'd appreciate if you could explain that one.
Sure. The Munis-paced training program, our big one there is a set number of four training days that we can use for any training that we want on our Munis financial system. Anything that we want to learn how to do, any new rollouts, that sort of thing. So we get four training days per year as well as one registration to the Munis conference. We started doing this because we found we weren't really keeping up with, or staying up to date with updates that Munis was making. So we joined this program and now we're more on top of the new features and functions of the system.
Just a follow-up, would Munis cover training related to, I know there was a lot of discussion about, you know, filling out those grant applications for, you know, people making grant applications to FEMA or whoever for knocking down their houses. Would that be something that our people can get, learn to be trained on in, in that kind of an atmosphere or no?
For this particular line, the Munis, no, that's just for our internal financial system. So just for internal users.
It's our accounting and payroll software. There is training with FEMA that's free. I'm not sure that we could ever get an employee up to the level of expertise that they need to do those FEMA applications. Not with, when, you know, with the other duties that most of our employees have. I think we'd have to have somebody who was more dedicated to that role. We also have memberships for Jen and her staff for state and local organizations. Professional services is our bank fees primarily. We do have a little bit of money in there for shredding of documents because some of the documents that they deal with are sensitive and we can't just recycle them. And then office supplies, that's check stock, toner, lots of fun stuff. Anything there?
Wait, Kate?
Yep.
And when you go to revenues, that's where the treasurer, that's where our...
This is where the investment income is.
Okay. And that's all 15 basis points she's anticipating for the next year?
Um, yes. Yes.
Was it, was it 30 basis points last year, do you remember?
I think it was, it may have been 25. But we had some CDs that were carrying, that their term ran into the current year and they were at higher rates and those have since come to maturity.
Yeah, I mean, we've been round and round on this, even on the Board of Finance, there's no, there's no risk-adjusted way to get better interest and so it's just going to sit there until the rate environment improves.
Yeah, and the reality is we're very restricted in what we can invest in. So could you go to 17 basis points if you went to some other things, you know, yeah, maybe, but...
We're not allowed.
Yeah, the state restricts what we can invest in.
Yeah, I understand. And I know, you know, there's a lag between what the Fed does and what we get at the bank, but, you know, Muni interest rates, I saw one up 25 basis points in the last month. So hopefully, this number will be better than expected.
Well, and, you know, as we're working through the process, both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, if you see rates starting to increase, we could up that number. we could up that number. Okay. The next budget, pretty quick and easy. This is the Board of Finance audit expense. This is the cost of clerk for the Board of Finance meetings and the audit. This is the town's portion of the annual audit expense. And we break it down. You might be surprised that even though the Board of Ed is the bigger portion of our budget, that the town is the bigger portion of the audit. But remember, we have all the other funds that they, that the auditors have to do, and this allocation is provided by the auditors.
Do you know what percentage is on us?
It looks like it's about two-thirds is ours.
Just so everybody knows, we put that audit out to bid periodically. I forget where we are on the schedule for that, but our current provider is, is, is pretty strong. And I think, I've certainly been satisfied with them. I think Jen has as well.
Okay, next up is the assessor. The full-time line is the cost of the assessor and two full-time employees. They are both certified assessors. In addition to the, in addition to Tony, both of the deputies are certified. We have a part-time clerk in that department. And then all this, the stuff is, you can see it's pretty unremarkable, no changes. The assessor and the deputies both attend an annual conference to maintain their certification. They're required to get a certain number of credit hours. It has been loosened up in what they can do, you know, allowing them to do things remotely. But there's a, you know, big, actually, it's the next line, but the training. But they have to do this every year. Professional services. I want to highlight this. This is, the majority of it is for a personal property auditor. So businesses in town have to file a personal property return with the IS, a report with the assessor every year, where they list things and it's their, you know, their furniture and fixtures, the computers, the racks, the shelves. And we regularly audit a number of the returns. And it always pays for itself. The, the work that our auditor does increases our tax, our taxable grand list by more than what his, his fee is. And the assessor does use the GIS technician and outside technician to assist with, with their maps from time to time. But that big one, the, the personal property auditor is important. Printing, he's got to print the rate books. Software maintenance and support, this is what I was referring to before. This is the Walsh system that's used for the taxes and the assessment. He also has a Kama system appraisal software. And then the usual office supplies, informational materials, not a big dollar amount going up, but percentage-wise, it's a lot. This is for the, it used to be called the Kelly Blue Book or NADA Pricing Guide. This is what they use to value motor vehicles. And they've been taken over by J.D. Power and the prices have dramatically increased. The deputy assessors are union employees and because they do outside inspections, they are entitled to uniform allowance. It's based on, it's reimbursable. It's not just a flat, you get it. But that's what that is. Board of Assessment Appeals expenses, this is pretty simple. It's just overtime for the, for the deputy assessors and clerks that if they have to staff the Board of Assessment Appeals hearings. You'll probably see, you see it go up higher in a reval year. Otherwise, it's pretty stable. We go to revenues.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, the assessor gets credit for some of the grants. So the first one is taxes on state-owned land. That's the rest stop. And then we get reimbursed for some of the veterans exemptions that we grant. Any questions on those? Okay.
Hey Kate.
Yep.
On treasurer, we kind of hit the the revenue side.
Oh, I skipped her.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I was so focused on going to the audit. The treasurer's budget is small. We have the salary for the treasurer. It's a part-time elected physician. The Board of Selectmen sets the salaries for the other elected officials. And they do get set for the term. So this is, and again, remember the 26.1, but that's the treasurer's salary and then very small budget for office supplies as needed. Okay, I won't skip the revenue on the next one, I promise. Tax collector is next. So again, this is, you know, not a lot in this budget, but this full-time salary, this represents the tax collector, again, elected official. And then we have two union employees in that office, a deputy and a cashier. There is a part-time clerk as well represented there. We do occasionally bring in seasonals to assist with high-volume periods or vacation periods. Travel is up. We have a new, the deputy tax collector has been there in that position for about a year or so. So she is going to classes to become certified as a tax collector. They do carpool when they can, but that's not always possible. So you also see the conferences and meetings for them to go to their professional associations and dues and licenses. Printing. Printings are tax bills. The rate books, all fun stuff. They do a little bit of advertising. They, they're required to advertise when the tax bills are going out. We have a, well, we have, where are we, software maintenance. This is the other half of what the assessor pays for. I shouldn't say quite the other half. The sewer department pays for some of it too. But this is the Walsh software. We do have a small amount for recording fees that go to the town clerk for when we file liens and then office supplies. This is the best number you see all night. So when you're looking at this, remember that we don't have the Board of Ed's budget in here yet. So that reduction, you know, that's, so this reflects just the Board of Education. We estimate what, what they'll collect in prior taxes. And I have to say, I think Kathy is very aggressive in going after the prior taxes. Interest in lien fees, anything collected on the prior year taxes, supplemental motor vehicle. As for people who buy their cars after the grand list date. We do get some supplemental real estate if we have a mid-year adjustment in somebody's evaluation. Suspense tax collection, after a certain number of years, we remove, we remove properties from the tax rolls or remove the collectible. But we still sometimes can get them in. So that's what that, that is. Telecommunication property tax is, you know, the telecommunications companies that have property in Darien in any town, rather than pay us taxes based on our mill rate, there's a state program that assigns what they have to pay us. So that's what, what this number of 48,000 is. And then not quite sure the other charges for services isn't, there's no detail.
Kate, on the supplemental real estate, how do you budget for that?
You know, it's just an estimate and it's through discussions with, with the assessor, with planning, with building on what's going to be coming online and you know, like they've got their CO, they're going to get reassessed or, you know, they can assess you mid-project. You know, like you could get a 50% assessment. And so it's a discussion with the other department heads as to what they see coming in. Okay.
Oh, wait, Kate.
Yep.
One more question on that. Maybe you went through this, but travel expenses were up?
Right, the, the new deputy tax collector is getting certified.
Oh, you did cover that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so she's going to state meetings.
Right, right.
And actually, Kathy is now on the board of their state association. So sometimes they have to travel separately. They do try and travel together when they can, but sometimes they're traveling separately. Alrighty. Legal counsel is going to be up next. This is one where I cut my own, my own budget. We separate out legal into three, three areas. The first one is the town council. And I started out with a $400,000 budget. Concerned that our litigation costs were increasing. And in an attempt to reduce the overall increase, I'm hoping it won't be as high as I originally thought it would be. We do pay a $100,000 retainer and then we pay for actual litigation. Labor council. We use a different attorney for arbitration cases and, and sometimes for consulting on employee matters. This is one that can be widely varying. We do have some contracts coming open that I think we, you know, where we may need their advice and, but it really can depend on what kind of grievances we get from employees, what kind of, if we get municipal prohibited practice complaints. That's where we go rely on them. Or if we have, you know, there's some situations with employee discipline where we rely on the labor council to provide us guidance and make sure that we do everything by the book. This last one is land use. And the planning director provides us the estimate for this. And it's another one that can vary widely depending on what kind of cases are out there and how intense they are. You know, we've had years when we've been sued by multiple parties over one, one issue, and so the cost can get pretty high.
Are there legal costs associated with contract negotiations or only when they go to arbitration?
We do not have any with contract negotiations. We don't use them.
I just remember the Board of Education had attorneys as part of their negotiations from it. Tom was involved in all that. I didn't know if the town did that.
You know, we used to. And if we, if we had a contract where we couldn't settle, we'd probably start with a mediator first. But if we ended up going to arbitration, then we would likely bring the labor council in to represent us.
Oh yeah, that's fine. I just didn't know if there were expenditures budgeted for their involvement prior to that point.
No, no.
Thanks.
Sarah?
Can you tell me where we stand under professional services, the litigation costs, where are we this year? Jen, do you know that?
Yeah, look, I have it here. Give me one moment.
Like, is that 300,000 lower than what we've had in the past few years? Is it average? Is it higher?
So this year, last year's budget was 38, actually going back, 2020, we had a budget of 438. And we spent 435. 2021 was 388, we spent 385.
Okay.
And 2022 is budgeted at 363.
Okay, thank you.
So it can be impacted by revale, Sarah?
Yep. Absolutely, yes. And I know, I just was curious. Thank you.
Okay, we're good there.
Kate, before we move off that, we do have one question that I received through the chat. Just provide a little more information on the 7% increase in the general legal and why we are worried about higher litigation activity.
I'm worried about it because of the trends that I'm seeing that you know, with the tax appeals continuing, some of them are dragging on. And with a number of the FOI issues that we have had, looking at the trends, I felt that we needed to increase it.
Thank you.
Okay. Probate court. We share a probate court with New Canaan. They are housed here. We are required by state law to provide them with certain expenses to, to run their operations. So that's what you see here. Professional services. I think, was that the one I, I limit, I proposed eliminating that because it was rarely used. And I think we have a problem there because it says minus 200.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
We'll fix that. But it's really not an option here. We're required to do this. This is our share of it. We build New Canaan. We also do build New Canaan for the overhead, you know, things like the electricity and, and stuff, the fact that we physically house them.
Sorry, did I miss something? The probate court, don't we share in the compensation of the probate judge or is that?
No, 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 no.
That's paid by the state or is that?
That's paid by the state.
Oh, okay.
Yep. We don't pay for their employees at all. And even, I don't know if we have any of them on our medical or, well, they've never been on our medical, but we sometimes include them as some of the smaller benefits, but they have to reimburse us for it.
Got it.
Okay, I went past. IT. So here's the big nut of the software. The long list of software that is general to the town operations that OpenGov, our email licenses, time and attendance software, we have service support, website maintenance. Our, these are Munis, OSDBA and the general maintenance. We do share those with the Board of Ed. And then the Log Me In, this is a new one. This is the software that we use for the RTM meetings and other conferences, other virtual meetings. Yep, Sarah. You're on mute, Sarah.
Under OpenGov, which I enjoy using, let me just say. But how many of our town officials have access to that? Do we have to pay separate licenses for each of the individuals or no?
No, it's a flat rate and we can have as many users as we like.
Okay, so who, just out of curiosity, who has access to this budget? Like town residents don't have access to this budget. Is it all elected officials who has access to this?
For this, we provide access to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, members of FMB and the RTM committee chairs.
Okay, because I had a couple of people who were elected officials who asked and I'm like, I don't know, you mean, because planning and zoning doesn't, Board of Ed doesn't. So I'm just curious. Who's allowed to see it? Okay.
So, yeah, this level of detail, this is for those who have to make the decisions on Yeah, this level of detail, this is for those who have to make the decisions on the budget, this level of detail, but we do have some access out on the website with public reports and people can go into them and then kind of slice and dice the data. They just don't get to the itemization level like what you see.
Right, so if you were to go to our webpage, um,
No, I've been to it. I need to take that level. I'm just curious to seeing this. I'm used to, and I know Mike is too, when you look at the Board of Ed budget, you can see all of this. There's a giant budget book. And so, um, this is kind of our budget book and I'm just curious.
Well, they, yeah, um, I don't know if you've posted this level yet, Jen, but it does get posted. What they don't see, what they can't do is do the dropdown.
Right.
But they'll see, and this is, so it's basically mimicking what we used to do on paper. So when we post it on Open Darien on the main webpage, um, any member of the public can go in and see this.
Okay.
But what they can also do on that is, um, you know, they can do some of the drilling down, like looking at all the overtime. You know, explore it a bit.
Okay, thank you.
This next line telecommunications, that's for the town's phone system. And to John's question earlier, this is overseen by IT. This next line, the 223, that is our contract with the Board of Education for, for them to provide our IT services. We pay a percentage of, did I put the contract up?
No, the contract's not in that.
No, it's, um, okay. Yeah, we'll put the contract up later, but it, it outlines, you know, what percentages we pay for, for each of the employees. We're assigned one employee who we pay 100% of his cost and then we pay a percentage for the director, a webmaster, technicians. And I think it's, you know, we've had some bumps on occasion, but I think generally it's been a, um, a good way for the town to get this service. And there's no revenue associated with it. Okay. Okay. Next up is registrar voters. Again, elected officials, so, um, their salaries, I'm gonna start with the voter registry. This is for their kind of year-round activity. This is where their salaries are. So this is the two registrars and two deputies. They're all part-time. We have travel for, for them to go to their conferences. They also have to be certified. So travel, conferences and meetings, their dues, printing, advertising, they've increased their budget estimate. There we go. Because of the redistricting, because they have to, they have to make every effort to inform voters of their new districts. This redistricting is going to be the gift that keeps on giving. Same thing mailing and shipping, additional expenses because they have to, oh, I'm sorry, they have to ensure their tabulator memory card. And then office supplies. Again, the increases are due to statewide redistricting. So we go to the other part, their election expenses. What we typically do with elections is we budget for the known. So if we know we're going to have a primary, we will budget for that. We do not expect that in this year. But the problem we have is the increased cost of the elections because of the redistricting. You can see right here, just in the one district, the one functions, the temporary or the seasonal temporary, $6,000 additional cost to support the staffing that's needed because of what's going to be happening in region one, in District One.
That's because you get people within one district who have three different senators they have to vote for or something like that.
There were, it's not just the senators, it's actually four different ballots. The combination between the senators and reps means four different ballots in District One. So.
When you talk about the election expense, this is as if there is no redistricting done within the town of Darien. This is due to the state redistricting only, correct?
Yes, yes.
We talked about the back, that the budget has policy implications on, on expenses, but this is not due to redistricting. This is just what we need to do for the state, for the town.
This is to respond to the state's redistricting. If the town were to redistrict.
That's different.
Right, and theoretically that should reduce our cost.
Right, but it's not in our budget.
It is not in our budget because we don't know that it's going to happen, so.
Right.
Um, you know, like I said, we budget for the knowns.
Yeah, okay.
So these are all the expenses related to it. Some things are just going up because of printing costs. But some things are related, you know, right here, $5,000 just for the redistricting. They have additional costs related to COVID supplies, related to training. It's, um, you know, it's, it's got a huge impact.
Kate, this is assuming there's no primary?
This is assuming there's no primary. This is just, this is just the. Yeah, this is just the fall election, so, you know, if there is a primary, like for the gubernatorial election, then we will have to add on.
Okay.
Okay.
Kate, what do we provide for food?
Yeah, they provide, you know, they provide bread and water. You know, I think they order them sandwiches. It's not, uh, it's not like, you know, a lot of things. It's, you know, it's not great food, not gourmet, uh, but again, you know, because we have to have those additional poll workers, you see a thousand dollars extra estimate for food. And it can be difficult to get poll workers. You know, it's, um, it's not an exciting job. It can be dreadfully boring and you're doing it for one day. It can be difficult, so to feed them is, you know.
Do we advertise for them?
Um, they, yeah, I don't know if, you know, like advertising the papers, but they put the word out everywhere they can. The town clerk. Let's get down there. So the town clerk salary is for, again, elected official and she has three support staff, all in the union. There is some overtime that's usually associated with election and travel to conferences. The new town clerk will be going to two conferences. Again, this is a position where she's going to be getting certified. So she needs to attend the conferences and go for the training. Clerical services, this is a cost for the RTM, um, the minute taker for the RTM. Professional services. They have to have their indices audited. We actually hire our former town clerk to do that. Advertising, um, I think this may be able to go down after, um, the RTM passed the amendment to the code last night. Because we had to sometimes advertise in the Stanford paper to meet the deadlines required by the, um, the RTM rules. So we'll take a look at that.
So that hasn't been reflected in, Kate?
That has not been reflected. So this was, this was assuming that we would still have to do some advertising in the, in the Stanford Advocate. But I believe that we can probably reduce that. I'll speak to Krista about that. Indexing is a service for the land records. They microfilm all their records. So, you know, and office supplies increase is due to the volume of activity because, um, they've been busy with, um, land transfers. Jen, yep.
Revenues?
Yeah, I'm, I just wanted to see, there, there are a couple of questions. I wanted to see if. Okay, so somebody asked, could the budget reduce, could we be reduced by the amount associated with last night? And yes, we think we can, so we'll check on that. So revenues. Donna's got an, or, sorry Donna, Krista has a nice profit center. You see a large revenue here, the town clerk's revenue. This is recording and filing fees, conveyance taxes. So when we have a good real estate year, this, this number would go up. We try and be reasonably conservative with those estimates. Because if we, if we overestimate, you, you, missing that number could really hurt us. And then just the minor things, you sell the, she sells codes. We have a coin-operated Xerox machine there that gets some revenue. But that's an important number there. It's 1.6 million. Okay, that's the end of general government. And we'll hit your capital later. But we're gonna move on to some of the community environment things. We'll start with beautification commission. Beautification maintains, maintains baskets, um, on the flower, on the lamp posts. Um, they have begun maintaining the, some of the property at Town Hall and the berm at the train station. Um, I did reduce their budget. Some, you know, they had asked for a significant increase, um, over the current year's budget and I just felt it wasn't supported and it was difficult, you know, when I was having to cut other things, I couldn't support, you know, the size of the increase that they asked for here when I was going to have to cut some other, um, other requests.
Kate, what were they looking to do?
Right.
They didn't, they, um, wasn't any specific increase. This is what you can see they made, maintenance of the Town Hall. I think that's where the bulk of their increase is probably from.
But maybe I'm misunderstanding whether, whether things that they asked for specifically that you elected not to fund?
This is, what they asked for was $18,000 to do the lamp post flower baskets to water them and, you know, and put the plants in them. Okay? $17,000 to make the Town Hall and berm plantings. So there was nothing more specific than that. But it was a significant increase. It was a, it was an over, it was $12,000 increase. As you can see, I've, you know, the increase is 4%. It's just one of those, you know, when I've got department heads asking me for additional full-time personnel and, you know, you know, there's needs. You know, it's hard to put another $10,000, $12,000 into this.
Kate, can I suggest that we look for a little bit more information on what this was earmarked for before?
Yep.
Right, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out. You're approving the things they want to do, but you think they shouldn't cost as much as they do or are there things that they were asking for that you didn't think were justified specifically?
Well, because they weren't specific in their ask.
Right.
I can't, I can't say that, so, um.
Okay.
You know, when I can.
Yeah, we'll get some specific.
And I can ask them what impact my cut will have on them. Okay. Celebrations and community grants expenses, so, um, this, one, it's called program expenses. This is for the Memorial Day Parade. They usually hire a band and that's what the cost goes to. Facility repair and maintenance is again for monuments and ceremonies. What they do is, uh, it's replacing flags at the, at the cemeteries, uh, you know, on Memorial Day. It's generally associated with that. We have started, um, an account for cemetery maintenance. This is for the, basically, I, I don't know how I would describe it, you know, kind of cemeteries that are not owned by anybody in particular. They may be historic cemeteries. You see, you know, there's one on the Post Road down near, um, the town line.
By Giovanni's, that one?
By Giovanni's, yep. And, um, so this is to do some cleanup maintenance work in there.
Some of those places are pretty sad. That's not unreasonable.
No, but I, I thought 10,000 was, um, was a lot.
Do we know how many cemeteries?
Um, we do.
There's a lot in town. I know some of the private.
There are a lot.
In 21.
But not all of them are our responsibility. I can get that for you. I know Public Works has the,
Sounds good.
Has the answer.
So Kate, you have fireworks in here, but you haven't had it budgeted for a while. Why is it still?
Um, because at one time we put money in there to pay for the, um, the police officers overtime and then we said, no, that, that's gonna stay in the police department's budget.
So the town doesn't pay
Sorry.
any of the, any of the other costs incurred, correct?
Um.
Historically or recently?
Well, historically, we used to pay for it all.
Right.
That's something we can discuss with Parks and Rec when, um, because they manage the fireworks now, so we do, we have, um, volunteers to do fundraising, but there are some costs that, um, that we do bear. Chamber of, uh, they're, they're later. Okay, Regional Hospice, this was a new request. I just, I didn't feel that, um, that we could afford to fund a new agency at this time. Holiday lights grant. The chamber asked for $35,000. They want to change up what we do on the lights and, um, again with, you know, with some of the other pressures on the budget, I felt difficult for the town to put this amount of money towards holiday lights. I did increase the budget over what it has been in the past. But, um, you know, I felt I couldn't go for the whole 30, 35 when I was making some other very difficult cuts. Historical Society, we, um, we support their expenses as it relates to maintenance of some town historic records. The Depot Grant, um, they asked for a slight increase and, um, there wasn't, um, really sufficient support for why they were increasing, so I left them at their current level of funding. Kids in Crisis, a very small grant. They've asked for the same level of funding that they've received in the past.
So Kate, going back to the depot, we don't know if it's because they have an increase in, um, the number of students.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. They want to expand to, um, lower grades.
I, I would support that. I think bringing in the children earlier is even better.
Yeah. So when you go through OpenGov, you'll see, you know, this was, I don't know if you saw where I went to get it in the proposal details. This is something we did this year. This grant request is much more detailed. So it is called out. They do mention in here that they want to, they want to increase the, um, they want to go down to a lower, you know, younger kids. So.
Can we get more info on that one too, Kate? When we, when she talks lower kids, are you talking fourth, fifth, sixth grade?
Hmm, let me see.
It's okay, I mean.
I, I think it was, um, I think like fifth and sixth, if I recall correctly.
Yep.
But I'll check on that and get back to you. But I'll check on that and get back to you.
Thanks.
Kate, thank you for attaching all of the grant application requests.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's some really good reading, so. I think, did I hit them all? We do have some that have, you know, applied, this Southwest Conservation District. We have never supported that financially. So they've asked again, and I did not include that. I didn't include any funding for them. But you'll see their application in the, you know, in the details, so. You can change that if you want.
On beautification, do you ever get input from the public as to whether that's too much, too little? They like it, they don't? Does anyone say anything about it?
No, I've never, never. I'm not sure how aware people are beyond the members of the commission, how aware people are that we have, you know, that they do this.
And that they've expanded what they, what they've been doing.
Yeah. Well, they've changed some, you know.
Yeah, we'll take another look at that.
Yeah. Okay, the last is the harbor master. Some minor expenses. Conferences, some program expenses, telephone for the harbor master, operating supplies. That's things like, well, doesn't give the detail, but you know, sometimes they have to put buoys out and all sorts of stuff. It's minor budget. We need a new harbor master.
Is that a volunteer position or just?
That is, it's a volunteer position, yeah. But they have to have certain qualifications.
So Kate, having a new harbor master, we won't incur any additional costs anywhere? Training or anything like that?
You know, I'm not going to say no, because, you know, they might want to change things up how they do it. I don't understand enough about what they do to, to say that there couldn't be more expense, but I wouldn't expect it. Okay.
Kate, are you going to go over like contingency another day?
We're going to go over contingency tomorrow because tomorrow, the police chief and we originally had police and Public Works scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay.
So they cannot make it, so we're going to go over the employee benefits, risk management, we'll add contingency in there, all the things that, you know, Jen and I are already going to be here, so we can do those then. And we're going to add the fire marshal and disaster preparedness in there, or emergency management in there as well. Going to go to planning next. Okay. So y'all know, we did a bit of reorganization this year. Jeremy Ginsburg is now the Director of Land Use, overseeing both planning and building. We've had some retirements in that department and some movement of personnel. We had a retirement in Parks and Rec, and one of the administrative assistants from planning moved to Parks and Rec. So there's been some shuffling. So you'll see in here, you know, the different, the different positions and an adjustment to reflect the transfer of one employee out. We do bring a seasonal employee in, in the summer to help with things like scanning, filing. We do have overtime in this department. In case you didn't know, there's a lot of night meetings. So the, some of the staff, the zoning officer and environmental officer are both union employees. So they have the option, when they have to work overtime, of taking pay or comp time. So we base it on, you know, Jeremy, Jeremy makes an assumption as to how much they will take in actual pay. Travel to meetings. Conferences for professional development for the high-level staff. Clerical, there's, there's an increase there. They have a lot of meetings that have to, where they have to have them recorded, like a court recording. So it's very expensive to do that.
Because the meetings, there are more, there are more meetings or they're lasting longer or both?
Both, but also depends on, you know, ones like, you know, they have a court reporter there. They might just need regular minutes, but there might be meetings where they need a full transcript for court proceedings. So the costs can vary depending on what's happening at the meetings or what happens after the meetings in terms of litigation. But this covers planning and ZBA and ARB and EPC, so it's all the land use departments in there. Yes, Sarah.
Moving down. Well, for software maintenance support, how are we doing? Is everyone transitioned over to the new platform or it's working?
It's working. Everyone's transitioning over. You know, it's interesting, we've determined that we have a lot of revenue receipts, you know, cash receipts, paper ones, that we're never going to need again. We are looking where we can add more. Like, you'll see, when we go down to capital, the health department would like software to enable them to accept credit card payments online for some of their services. So they have a proposal from one software provider, but we're also seeking a proposal from Viewpoint, or it's part of Open Gov actually. What if we added them into that system so that they'd be on the same system as planning and building? You know, which is going to be more economical, which will be better for our customers. But they're all, they're happy. You know, it took a lot of work to get it up and going, but it's working well.
Now, are they all digital? I know we just had a, a fun, we just put all the records online, correct? We?
We have been digitizing their records, their old records as we go along. So, you know, one of the things is, some of the stuff, if it's already on paper, we have to keep the paper.
Right.
So like, building permits, we have to keep those records until the building is demolished.
Oh goodness.
Yeah, because it was on paper once. But now that the building permits are all online, we do not have to create paper. Okay, so, so there's savings there. You know, eventually, some of the scanning that we've had to do of older records will go away. We won't have to be doing it anymore.
Thank you.
All right, so consulting services here. Part of it is our GIS. The increase is for non-GIS. That is partly to work on the Affordable Housing Plan, but also with our longtime Assistant Director of Planning retiring. They are hiring him as a consultant to basically, and how would you put it? Memorialize some of the knowledge he has of things that have had on certain properties into assist them with specific projects where our existing staff, you know, doesn't have the time for some of these projects. So we'll be hiring Dave to do some of that work.
Isn't he specifically assigned to the affordable housing?
That is his primary, primary objective right now. And that's, there's nothing else too, too big in there, the software we talked about. Revenue side here. They do get revenues for the applications, the P and Z applications, and so they're estimating a bit of an increase in the, the revenue for their P and Z applications. Okay, we're good there? Okay. Building. So right now, at this time, we have budgeted for four full-time inspectors, but what we actually have is three full-time and one part-time. But the one part-time is our former Chief Building Inspector who retired, and he will be fully retiring soon. So we will be looking to put in the fourth full-time inspector. However, we do expect that the need for that fourth full-time inspector will go away after this, the bubble of redevelopment ends. So we'll be reevaluating that in about two to three years, whether we continue to need, have that need for four full-time building inspectors. They budget for an intern in the summer to assist with scanning of all the old documents. There is some overtime. Building inspectors do get called out for some, some things on the weekends with fires or other damage to buildings. They need to go out. They are, as are many of us, required to be, get a certain amount of education every year. They also tried to hold some training for the builders.
So Kate, on the training, why is it?
That training that went to zero was, that was training last year for the viewpoint software. With going to the, the cost of the cell phones and tablets is increasing. I think we weren't providing all of them. That was yeah, we need to add one, we need to add one cellphone and tablet. They do, they can do their inspection reports out in the field.
Does that save time?
Pardon?
Does that save a lot of time?
Absolutely. But I think they've, they've made a lot of innovations over the years, and some of it, you know, it was Mike. When they go into one of the things like, you know, these big redevelopment projects with lots of apartments, they now have a check system, so any inspector going into the, into an individual unit can tell what inspections have been done on that particular unit so that we don't repeat things and, and end up costing more time. With the exception of the Chief Building Official, they are union members, so they're entitled to uniforms, and we do want them wearing them. We want them to be obviously town employees, so that's what the uniform line is for. Office furniture and equipment, you see it going down. Like I said, we have to keep the building, the paper building permits forever, pretty much. They have to be stored in fireproof file cabinets. So we were in the past buying a fireproof file cabinet every other year. That should spread out longer if, you know, we might be able to eliminate them forever. This is another good one for revenues. It's been difficult to predict their, their building permits because knowing when the actual work was going to be happening on the various redevelopment projects, you know, that, that's been a little bit challenging over the years. So we are trying to stay more conservative. But remember that, you know, these come ahead of the actual grand list, so. It's based now on an average. And they're estimating additional, this is an estimate for neuroton heights. Think it's a good estimate. These are other for the smaller permits. They're not really impactful, but this is the number where, you know, we, we do have to be cautious about overestimating on that one. All right, where am I going next?
Human Resources.
Human Services. I can, I.
One question on those developments, and I, I should know this, and I don't. At what point is a decision made to include the new developments on the grand list at their completed value?
That is, that is up to the assessor. And, you know, to get the completed value, I would assume that they have to be, have their CO.
Okay.
But, you know, he can do, he has some latitude, so if, you know, they're at 50% completed, he does have the ability to start increasing the assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so human services, formerly known as social services. There are two segments to this. We'll do human services first. This is the office staff. So it is the human services director. It is the assistant director. Actually, we have to change that. It says case manager, but, and it is also a portion of the administrative assistant. They share an admin with the health department. There are two part-time employees in this department that also provide administrative support. And one thing we'll be doing overall this year is looking at all of our part-time employees with regard to the increase in minimum wage and making sure that, that we are above the minimum, at least at the minimum wage, if not above it, but also making sure that we're proportional, that you know, if we have to raise certain positions to the minimum wage, how does that impact other people who have more complex jobs or more risky jobs? You know, making sure that we're appropriating, appropriately compensating them all. They do have some travel expense for home visits for some of their clients into conferences. Again, the, both of our, both our director and assistant director are MSWs, and they need to get continuing education to maintain their licenses. We pay for their licenses. They do some printing in the budget, in the, the department. They do a senior resource directory periodically. And then last year, we got them a database to track their clients. And it has been, it's a small cost, $1,600, but it's been a tremendous improvement for them in their ability to provide data on their clients and to just, to track them all, maintain the records. The other part of this budget is, we call it the outside assistance. We have essential needs payments. This is kind of anything you know, that people, their clients might need. It can be a down payment, or not down payment, a first month's rent. It can be helping to pay their electric bill or telephone bill. It can be groceries, it can be gas cards, it can be a, a lot of things. We do include in here, right now, we have $2,000 for the cost of evictions. By state law, we have a role in evictions, which has never made much sense to me, but we have funds in there to cover our share of the cost when, when we need to. The line we call program expenses, this is for the back-to-school program for holidays and for the Home Goods Closet. And then blight remediation assistance. We do have some funds for residents who need some assistance if they've been cited for blight and they're willing to work with us and fix the blight. We have some funding there to assist them. You know, what I'll tell you about these accounts, you know, with the exception of the blight one, but Ally will go to her other sources as much as possible and tries to use the town funds as her last resort. I think she does a really good job of, of managing her resources for her clients.
Kate, I ask us every year, does she need anything else? I know she's got other resources.
This is, this is what she's asked for, so.
I see. Yeah, there's no changes. I see. Thank you.
Okay, there's no revenues associated with this. Next up is senior center. We have, in the senior center, we have aside from the director, we have a program specialist, the two full-time employees, our part-time employees are the chef, building attendants, and an activity assistant, and a part-time clerical position. We are actually hiring for the, some of those positions now. The biggest thing down here is program expenses. These are the activities for the seniors. So they try and make as many of them as, you know, free, they try and get free instructors, but there are some that we pay for, and we also do charge the participants for going to them. Sometimes it's an entertainer that we bring in. And sometimes we have to pay for supplies. They have done a tremendous job in this department over the last two years to offer programs online and to really keep in touch with their members who cannot come back to the center. And they are open now with limited attendance, you know, because of space restrictions, but they've really done a good job of, of reaching out to them. Facility repair and maintenance, this is all the maintenance required to, for the, for the facility, the Bather Center. So a lot of this is around the kitchen. Cleaning the dishwasher, cleaning the grease trap, maintenance on, you know, things like the stove, the refrigerator, and then their garbage hauling.
Do you have an idea how many constituents or how many clients the senior center serves? And obviously that, those numbers may have changed during COVID, but in general?
They have absolutely changed. Um, I don't, let me see. So membership, you know, membership is, you know, kind of like, I've, I'm a member, because I'm surprisingly old enough to be a member.
Well, you only have to be 40, so.
So you see the drop off. The average daily attendance, you know, a lot different from the membership. The average daily attendance is, you know, 100 in programs drop off in 2021. But they're expecting it to pick back up, and, and you know, and because they've offered the online programs now, that has helped, helped boost that. I think when we get back to having meals in person, that'll, that'll help boost it as well, not having the drive-through anymore.
Kate, there was a discussion about redoing a room to make it a more of a, a computer room. Did that get anywhere?
They have a computer room.
They were going to get more laptops in there and educate more seniors?
You know, you know, Beth and I talked about that, and I actually, I want to touch base with her again, because then I'm thinking about that could be maybe a nice thing to spend some of the ARPA money on. We had talked about a bit of a lending library of computers and tablets. She definitely wants to run some more computer classes to teach the seniors, to get them more comfortable with using the technology and to use the software. What they have in their computer lab tends to be the hand-me-downs from when we replace our desktops. You know, that's where they go for their second life. It's a nicely set up room, and, and I'll tell you, you know, we haven't done it in a while, but we've run meetings for, or training sessions for employees down there. We used to have a computer lab for employees, but now we can run, we go down there and we can run a class in Excel or in Munis. We just haven't done that since COVID. Okay. Other big nut here is the food-related supplies, so this has gone up, and that increase is really tied to COVID with having to go to the basically takeout lunches. Our supplies have gone up related to the containers for the food. There are some revenues associated with this for both the programs and the food. They, they do try and cover on the food, they do try and cover the cost of the materials, the cost of the food itself. They're not covering the overhead for the chef, but, and then we have the program revenues, the fees for the individual classes that people take. And we have been discussing a membership fee.
Been discussing that for a while.
I know, you know, but I think we're getting there.
Would it be a membership fee for Darien residents or for just out of town?
Well, that's a good question, and I think that's a policy decision. I think if it's for Darien residents and out-of-towners, I think you'd have to have a distinction between the two. But the original thought was for non-residents. Youth services. So the full-time salary is just the youth director. Part-time salary, the youth department and the parks and rec department share two clerks, two clerks, part-time clerks, so they split the, the cost, one in this department and one in the other. Seasonal and temporary is the summer camp staff program assistants for some of the the special activities and the middle school summer activity program staff. The big thing here is program expenses. Slight increase there. This is the bulk of it will be the summer camp, but it's also the TOPS program. Some of the special things they do, like the tilly pump boat regatta, the window painting. It's a difficult, it's been a difficult one to estimate because COVID has really impacted this department in what they can offer. But we're hoping to be back more to normal with a modest increase. And when you look at the revenues, the, the fees for the programs, they really do try and cover the cost of the programs. It doesn't cover the overhead of the, the office personnel, but you know, the attempt with the fees is to cover, cover the cost. But again, we've been impacted by COVID, so this has been a difficult one to project.
I think when I was moving through today, I saw that they estimated that there would be less attendees this summer as well. I think that was in her notes. I mean, that would have been a revenue, but
Okay, I'm sorry.
It kind of was surprising to me that I
I'll check back on that.
Yeah, the summer camp projections were like half of what they were in 2019, and I just, I wonder if that's I would assume that as of this summer, they would start to go up from what they were last summer.
I, I will, I will, I'm, I'm going to go and check back on that.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, the last department tonight is the health department. This is one where I, I struggled. We are anticipating that there will be with the redevelopment, that there will be additional facilities that will require food inspections and possibly the nail inspections. So the director had asked for to move from having part-time sanitarians to full-time. We currently have the health director, one full-time sanitarian, and an office administrator. As, as full-time employees, they share that office administrator with human services. So I didn't budget the, I didn't put forward his request. I returned the other sanitarian to part-time. And that was the one I really struggled with when, you know, getting down the, the budget, trying to get to a target number. I think that you know, looking at what we have in terms of estimates for when these units, these buildings will be occupied, I think that July is too soon. But I do think it's entirely possible that come January, we'll need this full-time sanitarian. So I am aware of a retirement in another department that will result in the end in cost savings to us, but I can't, I can't identify where the cost savings are going to end up right now. But I have, you know, that's in my head as that money needs to be earmarked for for the possibility of adding this full-time. So between the part-time salary already there and, and, you know, this additional funds, you know, I'm comfortable that we could, if we need to in January, put that in there. I didn't feel comfortable putting it in there now. I thought there were too many unknowns.
Can I ask, what was the, was the response from the department in agreement? Do they concur that, oh, it's probably not going to be as big a need until January, or?
No, no. It was not. I've, and I have received multiple emails. I don't know if any of you have, but from other officials supporting the request.
Yeah, we all got them from that lady today that it was a little more generic in terms of the request, but it was basically a boost funding because we have these new developments coming.
It's, you know, well, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna see this. It's there are difficult decisions that you have to make, and you know, I feel like I've put together a good budget for you. You may choose to, you know, other people won't agree, right? And where I've added money or taken money out, you may choose to go in different directions. You know, there were other requests for full-time positions that were not filled or were not completely filled. Some had to be, you know, I did prioritize which ones I thought were best supported by data. You know, so that was the call I made.
Yeah, I mean, if I, one comment I'd offer if I put on my prior government hat, I mean, my perspective at that time was to make sure that whatever the aggregate budget was, that we had been thoughtful enough about it, so it's that the tax revenue was going to largely cover it. And that the idea was that anything that was uncertain, right? And we had a big argument about COVID expenditures, what, two years ago? And trying to ask the question in the budget that we were planning at that time, whether there was enough money in the budget to cover anticipated COVID expenditures. And my view during those debates was, look, we don't want to overplan or overtax for this, because the reality is that we, A, don't really know what's going to happen, and B, we do have enough money in reserves to cover this, and we will convene the board and respond to that immediately if such a need becomes more transparent and more, more evident. I think in this particular case, it's not to say to the folks who support a role like this that we're unwilling to consider it. We're absolutely willing to consider it. But maybe it's a reasonable philosophy to say we're trying to budget for what we really, really know we're going to need, and that these things that are prospective, we're going to wait and test it to see if we really need it. And when that day comes, the good news is that we have enough funds and fund balance to, to cover these kinds of expenditures. So I don't know what everybody thinks of that, but that's the way I've thought about this for a long time.
But I, I mean, I certainly agree with that philosophy. That's why I asked the question, did he feel, did they feel that there was a demonstrated need currently? I get that, okay, well, maybe not till later in the year when these things come online, and there are actually more inspections, and then we can always make a different judgment at that time, but I, I was curious to know if there was a delta as to that, I understand we're getting more units rolling out. We're going to need even more in January, but we need this individual now. That's the data point that I, I would want to know, but I, you know, I certainly agree with that philosophy that you're espousing, John.
Just a HR question on this. Could you not, obviously, I assume you can't advertise for the position until it's in the budget. So if we don't put it in the budget until a year from now, we can't even advertise, and it may take, I, I mean, I don't, I have no idea how long it takes to hire somebody in that department. Is it the kind of thing that maybe we consider putting in, you know, the last quarter of the year, because it gives us the opportunity to at least start the hiring process?
So, yeah, you wouldn't I wouldn't advocate for advertising and hiring before there was funding available. But
Right.
Certainly, you know, if the funding, say the funding was available July 1, I'd have no problem with starting the advertising in advance to get to the point where you could start them on July 1. So, you know, to your point, yes, if you wanted to put in something, you know, assume a March 1 hire date, you know, you could do that, and we would start the hiring process probably like six to eight weeks beforehand. I wouldn't want to put, I wouldn't want to advertise without funding
Right.
knowing I had it.
Yeah, I just always get concerned with how, you know, strong the labor shortage is and finding somebody to fill these positions, how long it's going to take to, to find somebody.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, some positions, it takes quite a while to, to find. And the problem that we face here is realistically, a job like that would be, the salary would be in the $70,000 range. So you're going to be looking at somebody who's coming from a distance. Because, you know, on that salary, it's not a person who probably can afford to live down here. So that means we have to cast our net wider to find them. But I think the more important thing is, when is, you know, if we can evaluate when our need for the position will, will be real, and I feel like with all these redevelopment projects, we have we have said, oh, you know, they're going to be complete this then, you know, this year, and then they're going to be complete next year, and it's been off, and, and the you know, completion dates have moved on, on them, you know, so you know, I'm not even confident to sit here and say, well, we know this one's going to be done in September, and, you know, all these places are going to open, and so you're going to need somebody, you know, right then in September. You know, I took a same approach with the fire marshal. You'll see tomorrow night, you know, he asked for two full-time people. And, you know, just don't feel that it was supported to bring two full-time people on in July. And, you know, one of the things I want to ask you, you know, really consider, the second full-time person that I'm proposing for January, is that the right place? Is, you know, is that the right timing? And, you know, maybe the, the solution to some of this is, you know, this one goes in January, and that one goes next year. It's not, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I probably would be doing something else for a living, or I'd be retired.
But I think it's good to remember that the reason that we're even having this discussion is because of these new developments and the additional revenue we're bringing to town.
Right.
And, you know, some of your decision-making can be impacted by, you know, next week we'll have a better picture of what the grand list is going to look like, and what, what revenue increase we might expect from the grand list, and how much would that offset any tax impact? So that might give you more room to do more things than I proposed. You will see increase here in software maintenance. You will see increase here in software maintenance and support. This is related to a request for upgrades to their software system. And then we'll go over to capital in a bit. There are revenues associated with this department for food establishment licenses, pool permits, a variety of different permits. So the biggest one is the food establishment licenses. That's all the operating we're going to do tonight, so if nobody has any more questions on operating, I'll switch over to the capital.
So Kate, just to go back to this, so your food establishment is a 4%. So you're not budgeting in for any of these new establishments, right?
It does not appear that way. But that's a good point, so. I'll, and we'll see if there can be any increase to revenue. Okay. All right, I'm going to go over to the capital fund. Okay, we'll hit general government first. So we have a couple of things proposed here. Actually, let me go back here. When you come into these, on the proposal details, you'll see down here a summary of the section. It's a PDF, it's from an Excel file. But you'll also see the information on the request, so like website update. This is all the information that I provided regarding the request for that, that funding. So these are good to look at. Okay, so our website is, was last updated 10 years ago. I think it is time that we update it. I have a quote from a, a company that specializes in government websites, $35,000. I had originally requested and then cut my own request for a storage building at Highland Farm. I just felt that, in the current year with all the other demands, that we couldn't, couldn't support that. Another request from our department for signage. 15 years ago, we got a steep grant to put signs around town. If you see the ones that are at, like, the entranceway in Norwalk and coming in from Stanford, they're wooden, signs are white, they are old and not in great condition. We'd like to start replacing them. The original request was $100,000. But considering that, well, that's a lot, I'd rather spread it out, or my recommendation is to spread it out over five years and do several of the signs at one time, or at a time. Revaluation, that's going to be coming up in 2023. That's something we need to do. Desktop replacement. This is a proposal from the IT department to replace desktop computers in Town Hall. We replace them every three to four years. And then switches at the police department, and, you know, I had to get an explanation of what this is and a diagram of what it is. But basically, without these switches, they have, they're useful, they're at the end of their useful life, and if we don't replace them and anything goes bad, it, it could be, it could shut things down. So it is important that we replace them, so I put that one forward.
Kate, why is this not in the police budget?
Because it's an IT request.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
So those were all the things that were requested for the current year. If you look at the six-year plan, and we call it a six-year plan as opposed to five-year because we, you know, do the current year, the upcoming budget year plus the next five. So you'll see some things that were recommended for the out-years. You know, like I'm recommending some software next year, '24, sorry. Device replacement in '24, '25. So you'll see, you'll see like the cost of reevaluation is, be funded over a longer period of time. So you'll see one of these with every department. And it's good to look at them and see what people are looking after the future as well.
Kate, going back to the signage for a minute, as a practical matter, what, what will that look like? I mean, do they say, are they dilapidated? Do they, is $20,000 a year going to be enough so that any person going into this town and going past these signs is, is going to see something that is presentable?
Well, I think they're, they're a little bit dilapidated now. So I wanted to start with the, the ones that are most visible. You know, the ones at the, you know, like, when you come in from Norwalk, those ones, get those done first. Then there are some smaller ones that are not in as bad condition. But I thought it was going to be a hard nut to do $100,000 for signs in one year.
Is there an argument to be made to just remove the ones that are very dilapidated and then restore them? I mean, I think it's, to have something look bad because we're not getting to it because there are other priorities, when it's something that's coming into the, you know, the town. I, I just, I just want to do the, you know, the smart thing. I get what you're saying about the amount of money.
You know, let me do a little bit of legwork. I have pictures of some. Let me see if I can get pictures of all of them. My concern with taking them out would be being able to get them back. So if we replace like-for-like, same sign, same location, we're not going to have to go through any regulatory approval. If we remove them and want to put them back, we're going to have to go and get approval from the, probably ARB and planning and zoning. So I don't want to do that if I don't have to.
I would also consider, just from a production standpoint, if, are they all signs that say the same thing?
No, no.
Okay, so they're, each one is individually a little different?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. What else we got?
Going back to the website, what's the timing on that?
If, if we started on July 1, I'd, you know, I'd have to go into my file and get the quote. It is, it is not, you know, an immediate turnover. It's a number, it's, it's, you know, there's a timeline.
Well, I'm sorry, Kate, one other question in this area. So what were the items that were being planned to be put in storage in Highland? What happens to that, and what's that site look like if we don't have storage there?
So what the plan was for is to be able to store a lawnmower and some other landscaping equipment on-site. Right now, they have to trailer a lawnmower and bring it up there to do, to mow it. So it would be a time-saving for the Parks and Rec Department. That's, you know, that's the, and if we were to do it, we would probably, you know, it would include an enclosure where we could have a porta potty there on a regular basis and not be visually offensive.
Would putting that up have to get approval by the RTM?
Not by the RTM, but it would have to go to ARB and planning and zoning.
Is, is, would the, would the neighbors have a problem with that?
With the shed? I think, you know, that's going to depend on what we propose. And when we first talked about it, we were looking for something that would mimic the look of the Hunk Club, something that would look like a barn. So I think
Kate, where do you want to put it?
In the, would be the west parking lot, the one that's closer to the Hunk Club. There's an area that had been designated when the plans were originally done for the, the walking trail. There's an area that, where it was designated that that would be the location. Commissions, beautification, I think it was asked for, I'm sorry. Yeah, beautification asked for some funding to eradicate weeds at the berm. This is the, the berm that's, at the downtown train station, Squab Lane. So they did a lot of work on that in the years past, but there's some invasive plants there that are crowding out native species. And, you know, we had some changeover in the beautification commission a couple of years ago, and the leadership there is really working very hard to have native species that are low-maintenance and attractive, and to get rid of the invasive species. So I do think this is a worthwhile project. It's something that's a little higher profile because of the location.
I think that there's been a lot of discussion about invasives at different locations in town.
Yep, you're going to see that in the Park and Rec budget.
Yeah, I support this.
Who else do we want to do? The health department, I referred to this earlier. They're looking for software to be able to add a payment portal on top of, of their existing software that would allow people to file their permit applications and pay online. So I do support this. It's one of our last departments that didn't have this capability. You know, one of the problems we went into is you might have good software. It's not so simple to just collect the credit card information because you have to be able to have something that communicates from your software to us, who paid and what they paid for, so that we know that it was not a Park and Rec fee, it was a health fee. So that's what this, this is for. Like I said, we are exploring a couple of different options, but we know this is a known number. So that is the high, high end.
And that's just the initial investment, right?
That's the initial investment, then there would be ongoing software support every year. But typically, the support is included in the first year's cost, and then you get this. So in subsequent years, we'd have to add that to the operating budget.
So Kate, when you say that's the high end, how much, how much of a spread between that and?
I don't know. We're still waiting on information from Viewpoint, which is the software that's used in, you know, or it's a version of OpenGov that's used in planning and building. So we're waiting on what the costs would be to use them instead. So that's where I feel like, we already have a number of $19,000. If Viewpoint comes in lower and it makes sense for us operationally to do that, you know, that would be my recommendation. Okay, that is, that is it for capital for the departments that we covered tonight. Okay. Tomorrow night's a big night with Parks and Recreation and the library. And then talking about employee benefits. I don't think it's on our list, but we'll do debt service tomorrow night. There's nothing you can do about the debt service, but we'll cover it for you.
Are there any questions in the chat box, Kate?
I see one thing. Question, could we hire a consultant if necessary in January to cover the need? This is from Jack. I'm assuming he's referring maybe to health. I would suppose that would be possible, yeah.
And does anyone else have any questions?
All very clear, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Kate. Terrific job.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Yeah, Kate, I got one question. When is police going to be reviewed?
Police will be on the 31st.
Okay, thank you.
And so will public works.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be, that will be a long night. Okay.
All right, if there's anything else, then we will call it a night.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.